Test. Can people on Zoom hear us? Test, test.
Yes. I heard you momentarily, but I don't hear the program.
There's Bonnie asked.
Test, test. Can people on Zoom hear?
I can.
Sorry, we're making sure that the Zoom link is working out of audio.
I can hear you.
Can I have a... It is so good to see everybody. You look really good this morning. You look really good this morning. What an awesome time it was last night. Thank you so much. Oh my gosh. We're going to get into that a little bit, but I really can't even start the meeting without, without, without telling you how thankful I am and how honored I am. Hands down, the greatest privilege of my career has been serving here. This is such an amazing place and you are really in awesome hands. You're in great hands. But to just pause and to celebrate the goodness of God over the last 20 years has been, has been a real treat. So thank you very much. Let's, let's open with the word of prayer. Lord, we just thank you for all of your great and precious promises. We thank you that through these promises, you invite us to be partakers of the divine nature. And so, Lord, I just pray that you would remind us all in this season after Easter, as we walk in newness of life, of the great privilege that we have. Thank you for this time today and help us with all the things that we need to talk about. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Now, I think Bonnie has a little bit of fun. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so many of you came last night. Thank you so much. One of the things we were not able to do last night, just from a time-saving, is tell your favorite Steve story. So this morning, I thought we would hear from some of your favorites. Somebody else there has got a great Steve story that they are dying to share. Anyone? Wow, you guys are being very nice to him. Okay, then I'm going to call out somebody. We have had lunch with a lot of members lately and one of the things several members have been kind enough to do is offer Steve advice on how best to get along with faith as he retires. So I'm going to ask Kay to give, I loved what your advice was to him, about how to survive retirement with faith or how faith will survive it with Steve.
Well, one thing I said was, she wants you for breakfast and dinner, but not for lunch.
How many agree with that? Wow, that's great advice.
And the other thing I said was, he might find a Romeo group. That's retired old men eating out. And he could have five groups, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday for lunch.
Any other helpful advice for Steve as he retires? Any hobbies he should try? Oh, cruising.
I don't have advice for him, but you know, up until last night, I thought his greatest accomplishment was passing my Greek Herman Utes Exegesis course. And how are you?
How great would it have been to give Steve a D? I mean, that'd be awesome. No other advice, no great stories. Some of you have lived here a long time. There's got to be a good one. Jane, I was counting on you actually. You always have a good Steve story.
Well, I don't, I don't know what kind of a Steve story that we're going to tell, but when we built, we built Crestwood, I was the first person that moved in there. I moved in on June, the 15th, 2012, in the morning and Jerry and Carolyn Adlers moved in in the afternoon. So we had one house or two households in the building and I was on the fourth floor on this end and they were on the first floor on that end. But you know, it was not haunted. Not yet. And ever since then, every time I see Steve, he's still calling me number one. And he'll say, how's number one today? So you just remember I'm number one. And another story about him, when he was doing a marathon, my niece, who was, I think the age that they wanted people to be was 18 and she was 17. And so she had to run the marathon with her trainer. And I have a picture on my computer slideshow of Steve and Olivia in their marathon bibs congratulating each other for having run the marathon.
That's awesome. That's awesome. You're still number one. All right. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So first of all, I want to acknowledge our online audience. How many people do we have joining us? We have 12 people. Would you give a round of applause to the online audience? Thank you for joining. We've got some very exciting news, some important news that's coming up. And so we're glad that you've tuned in. We have the awesome experience each month of acknowledging the stars of the month. And the first person that we want to acknowledge today is Cecilia Moti, who is an LPN in the Health Center. Would you all come up here? Could you all, could you all come forward? Yes, all of you, all of you. We do not have enough of an opportunity to thank all of you for what you do. Oh my goodness. Look at this. You have some awesome teammates, Cecilia. Thank you so much. This is what Anderson said about you. Compassion, professionalism, and exceptional care. Cecilia embodies the true essence of a caregiver who goes above and beyond for the well-being of our elders here at Trinity Woods. And Anderson is the household manager for Pretty Harbor. So we are delighted for this month to be able to acknowledge you. Thank you so much for all that you do here. Congratulations. Now, I need to ask you a couple of questions, okay? How long have you been an LPN?
It's going to be two years in June.
Two years. And what did you do before you were an LPN?
I was a primary school teacher back in Kenya. But yeah, but over here, I had to start from, I did housekeeping, I did CNA, yeah.
So you started as a housekeeper and then you became a CNA and then you became an LPN. And now, and now you're serving in, in Pretty Harbor. Now, let me ask you this. How many of the rest of you started as a direct care worker? I want you to hold your hands up for just a second, okay? When I was 17 years old, I enlisted in the United States Navy. And my first job was, I was an orderly. I was a hospital corpsman and so I helped patients get to and from surgery. I took blood pressure. I did all of those basic things. And I want you to know that senior living is staffed by many, many, many people like you who started as direct care workers. And we are so grateful to you for everything that you do to serve the people of Trinity Woods. Thank you so much. And Cecilia, God bless you. Thank you so much. There you go. Appreciate all of you coming up. Thank you so much. Now, the second person who is being recognized is Tasha Thomas. Tasha is a CMA and she works in memory care assisted living on the night shift. So she's not able to be with us today, but we thank God for our CNAs and our CMAs. And they, they play an indispensable role in delivering the services here. So we're glad to be able to acknowledge them this month. We have two service awards this month. We're recognizing Kelly Harrelson for five years in dining. And we are recognizing Gary Stevenson for five years on the night shift as a security guard. So would you join me in giving a round of applause to them? That is, that is awesome. And when you see them, please congratulate them on these important milestones. That's a great blessing. We have pins for them. We'll see to it that they get those pins. Now, I just want to pause to thank everybody that was involved last night in making it such a special occasion. Bonnie and Jacob did an awesome job as the emcees. The dining services team did a phenomenal job of providing an excellent meal. And I'm just so thankful for everybody that had a part in the program. I was so, so deeply touched and honored. And it was pretty cool to be texting back and forth between Tulsa and Taipei so that Daniel and Nicole could join in, in the special experience. And thank you to everybody who, who, who wrote cards out to me. That was very, very touching. And you know, I'm walking around and Doris, everybody's jealous because I get to go to a Yankees game. And yeah, isn't that, isn't that awesome? Just out of curiosity, how many people are Yankees fans that will admit it? Look at that. Look at that. That is, that's, that's pretty cool. My hometown, I was born in White Plains, New York, which is just north of New York City. And so an added benefit of this is that I'm going to try to figure out a way to get up to White Plains. I haven't been back there in, I don't even know how long. And so to go to the, my, my, my elementary school and my junior high, it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun. So thank you very much. That was, that was very thoughtful. Now, we need to shift gears, okay? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna shift from kind of the fun. I have some information that I want to share with you that is very, very important to everybody at Trinity Woods. As you know, last fall, we started working with a task force called the Future Vision Task Force. This task force was made up of several board members, several community members, several outside professional advisors, all participated in the work of this task force. I want to recognize May Timmons and Andy Ewing and Tom Owens because all of them played an important role on this task force. And the role of the task force was twofold. The first role was to look at the expanded landscape of Trinity Woods, the 50 acres, the 40 existing acres and the 10 acres of the Dartmoor subdivision. And to begin the process of thinking about what the future is, what the future has in store for Trinity Woods. Part of this process was merely conceptual. They, it had to do with the ideas that would relate to how health center services, how healthcare services will be delivered in the future at Trinity Woods. The existing health center has some limitations that, that the organization needs to overcome as it looks toward the future. And so part of the question was, how can we, how can we identify ideas that would help set the stage for what's next there? The second thing was about the Dartmoor subdivision. What are the possibilities for the Dartmoor subdivision? And again, at the conceptual level, we talked about several different ideas. The possibility of a multi-story building similar to Crestwood. The possibility of patio homes similar to the patio homes that we have. And the possibility of villas similar to what we currently have on Sandusky. All of those ideas were part of the dialogue that went into this. And the reason that we wanted to do this is because one of the most immediate concerns that we face has to do with gating the Trinity Woods community and the main entrance on 31st Street. And you, when you're doing master planning, the first and most important thing is to pick where you want the main entry to be. So in that spirit, the Future Vision Task Force presented a recommendation after several months of work and after the input from the straw poll that we took with the community members, a recommendation was presented to the board at the March meeting to gate the Trinity Woods community. And that recommendation was unanimously adopted by the board. What I'd like to do is to take a minute now, and we have actually a, an animated video that I want to walk through with you to show you exactly what is being developed, what is moving now from this conceptual phase into the development phase at Trinity Woods. So the first thing has to do with relocating the main gate. And the main gate will be moved from its current location to the west. And in this rendering here, what we're going to try to do is to pause this if we can. Okay. There you go. There you go. Okay, so all right, here's what we're going to do. Just let it run. So you can see the main gate there. What's in the foreground there is Crestwood. This is an aerial view that kind of shows what the, what the, what the configuration of this new entry will be. There's four lanes of traffic, two lanes entering with an adequate space for emergency vehicles. This is what the intersection of 31st and New Haven, or excuse me, 31st and Sandusky looks like. And this is 33rd and Sandusky. Oh, wow. Great. Okay, so there will be a guard shack that is, or guard house. I keep calling it a shack. I shouldn't do that. There's a guard house that will be staffed 24 hours a day, seven days a week. All of these security cameras on campus will be monitored from this single location. We have security cameras right now. They are, they are located in the security office. And this will actually be improvement because there will be somebody monitoring those, those cameras and we'll have easier access to them. You can see here that there's actually a bypass lane here that, that permits emergency vehicles and large trucks to, to gain access to the community. Also, community members who have a sticker will also be able to bypass the, the security gate and visitors will check in at that, at that main entrance. There are two lanes exiting here as well. And while we're on this, I want you to notice that the existing west gate will remain open and functional as it is right now. So anybody that wants to exit onto New Haven and to go west on 31st Street will be able to do that at the intersection of 31st and New Haven there. Is there a way that you could advance it to the 31st and Sandusky? Yeah, there you go. So at 31st and Sandusky, the curb will be replaced. The sidewalk will be connected and landscaping and fencing will be installed to make the appearance seamless. We will probably do something to allow for a turnaround here so that everybody that inadvertently goes to the end of the street won't have to turn around in the Hertzler's driveway. But so this will be, this will accommodate a turnaround. There will be gated access at 33rd and Sandusky so that residents who wish to use that as an alternative entrance or an alternative exit will be free to do so. This will be a sliding gate and Dennis is working right now. We do have to go to the city to get permitting for this. We have to contact all of the people within 300 feet. They'll be invited to come and hear about the plans here. And they're also invited to attend the planning and city council hearings where the action will be taken to approve this. In conjunction with that, we will probably do a traffic study, which will involve putting down a car counter so that we can accurately estimate what the volume of traffic using the 33rd Street access will be. One thing that is not portrayed on this is that we will seal the existing front entrance and it'll be nicely landscaped and appointed so that the appearance of that area is, is beautified. Now, let me pause and see if anybody has any questions. Yes, Julia?
On the 33rd exit, when you said there would be a counter of traffic, is that counter on Sandusky counting the traffic or on 33rd? And when you get a sizable amount, what does that mean?
So the question was, what did I mean when I talked about the counter? The traffic study would evaluate the current flow of traffic on Sandusky Avenue, both people coming in off of 33rd Street and people leaving. It will also measure the traffic from the rest of the campus onto Sandusky. And the purpose of that is to provide an accurate estimate for the planning commission as to how many people would be using a south access point on the campus of Trinity Woods. When, many of you won't remember this, but 31st Street used to dead end at the western border, the western property line of Trinity Woods. And when Crestwood was built, we opened Sandusky to incoming and outgoing traffic at the west gate. When we did that, we went through the same process. So you, you have to notify all of the neighbors. You have to, you have to conduct a traffic study that estimates what the, what the change would be. And those people had lived on a dead end street for many, many years. So there was great interest in this. I don't really know yet how many people live in that 300 foot area, but we will keep them informed about the process. And of course, they have the right to express approval or disagreement when we go through the permitting process. Did that answer your question?
If you're counting before, how are you going to do that before there's access to that gate?
Well, we assume that most of the people who will use the south gate are already here on the campus. And so we measure the, the flow of traffic at other exits and entrance into and out of the Sandusky neighborhood in order to get that estimate. We don't think that there'll be an increase, in other words, when that, when that's open. We expect that it would be similar to the use that currently exists on Sandusky. Okay. Jane, did you have a question?
The video showed something about a card entry. Now the west gate, you push a button. Is there going to be a uniformity of methods of how the members, do you have to have a card in one place and push a button in another place and, and go through a screening in another place?
So it's a great question. What we envision right now is it'll be like a, kind of like your Pike Pass. If anyone has a Pike Pass, it's similar to that. It may not go on the, it could possibly go on the windshield or it might go on your headlight. It just, it just depends. I'm not sure which system we'll go with, but that's how you would enter. Correct. And all of those, even 33rd Street will be changed to that same entry style. Yeah. Or excuse me, 33rd Street and 31st Place, the west entry, all three gates will have the same. Yeah.
Now, are there any other questions about the plans that, that I showed? Or any other questions about this process? Yes. Yes, thank you so much. So again, this is kind of an animation. It doesn't show all of the, all of the details. There will be a port of cashier on the guard house that will protect people from inclement weather. So there'll be a, there'll be a covering that you'll pull under if you're, if you're actually checking in with the security guard. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, now. Um. One of the awesome privileges, and this was mentioned last night, one of the awesome privileges of uh being a leader at Trinity Woods is the amazing way that philanthropy helps Trinity Woods do things that it could not otherwise do. Um, I mean, imagine this, um. There was a lot of discussion about the development that has occurred at Trinity Woods over the last twenty years. But guess what? When I arrived here, I got a call from a woman who lived in assisted living. Her name was Ruth Span. And Ruth asked me a question. She said, if I leave the balance of my estate to you, would you build a a um a workout center, a fitness center where the people who live in this community could benefit from exercise and strength and conditioning training? Ruth and her husband used to love to go to the All American Fitness behind Steak and Ale on Fifty First Street. Remember that? Um, and they 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 derive such pleasure from that that they wanted to leave a legacy that would enable other people to enjoy the same benefit. And do you know that at that time, we didn't have anything like that? Someone was reminding me the other day, there used to be one Schwinn Airdyne bicycle and an old dilapidated treadmill out in front of Dennis's office. And um, I I said to Ruth, Ruth, that would be awesome. That would be awesome. But right now, we need sixty five thousand dollars to do the planning that would pave the way for all of that to happen. And Ruth gave the first gift to enable the planning that has trickled down in all the different ways that you see. It started with Crestwood and Span Wellness Center. That led to the Holloman Center uh replacing the old assisted living building. And that led to Marshall Gaddy and the Barnes House and to the Community Life Center. And all of that has been enabled by philanthropy. Now, philanthropy is kind of an interesting thing. Not everybody has to give. Not everybody, no one is pressured to give. Not everybody has to give, but guess what? Everybody benefits. Everybody benefits. Now. Last fall, I told you that a generous um donor to Trinity Woods came to us and volunteered to pay for the planning for everything that you've just seen. And then in December, that same person came to me and said, he called me on my on my cellphone and he said, are you in your office? This is December twenty eighth. And I said, I am. He said, I'm gonna be right by, meet me in the parking lot. So I go out to his car. It's a cold and and drizzly day and he rolls his window down and he hands me an envelope and says, please take this and deposit it before the before the weekend. And I said, well, thank you very much. This is very kind of you. You're very generous. And I thought it would be distasteful to open the envelope. So I thanked him and he drove away. Of course, immediately after he drove away, I opened the envelope and in it was a check for five hundred thousand dollars. Five hundred thousand dollars. So I immediately called him on the phone. He's probably driving on Harvard. And I said, it now occurs to me that I should have opened the envelope because it would give me the opportunity to thank you for this. And this 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 person has a special place in his heart for Trinity Woods. And he wanted to help us do something that we wouldn't be able to do otherwise. And we knew that that what everything that you've seen falls into that category. So we have five hundred thousand dollars. But you can see that the scope of this has gone way beyond just relocating the main gate. And the cost opinion that we have right now is one point two million dollars. So we have five hundred thousand. We need one point two million. And I wanted to share this with you because over the course of the next few weeks, nothing would be mean more to me than being able to say to the board and to the new CEO, we've successfully raised the money that we need in order to complete this important project. If any of you have an interest in helping with a small gift, a medium gift, or maybe even a large gift, we would welcome that. But if you are not in a position to help, we totally understand. No one will be pressured to give. But we want to do this right and I'm absolutely confident that Dennis Graham um, who will serve as the project manager and the owner's rep on the project will see to it that we get the best possible value uh for for this work. So I wanted you to be aware that we're that that part of my goal before I leave is to see to it that the resources that we need in order to complete this project before the end of the year are secured. Does anybody have any questions? Um, thank you so much, Julia. You you ask the best questions, okay? Um, I will, Garrett's first day is May sixth. My last day is May seventeenth. So I'm hoping that between now and May sixth, we can secure the resources that we need. Now, here's the really cool news. We've already been meeting with a few people. And of the seven hundred and fifty thousand that we need, we've already raised about a third of that. So we're we're a third of the way toward the goal of uh meeting that meeting that need. Okay. There'll be more to come on that. Um, thank you so much for uh taking the time to listen. I do want you to be aware that um we understand that we have made a promise to you to um provide quarterly updates on the financial position of Trinity Woods. And Jerome Steele, our chief financial officer, wanted me to alert you that the first quarterly update will be provided at the May Town Hall meeting. So at at next month's Town Hall meeting, you'll get a complete financial update on the performance of Trinity Woods in the first quarter of twenty twenty four. And with that, Bonnie is gonna come forward.
Thank you. Don't go anywhere. Um, so, whoa, that I'm allowed. Um, we have a special presentation. A donor came to Dennis and I um probably a month or two ago and asked if um they won, they felt like this room needed a clock. And so they said, we would really love to gift a clock in Steve's name. It was uh Richard and Peggy. They were very kind and we have held it a secret for you. There was so much. But this clock will hang at the back of the Community Life Center in Westerville Hall in Steve's honor and it was graciously provided by the Ziegler's and we wanted to present that to you today.
Sweet. That is so sweet. Richard and Peggy, did you know that my love language is quality time? Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. That's awesome.
You'll need to turn a work order in to get that hung.
Actually, it's already done. Ty knows that right after this meeting, it is to be hung, so it should happen quickly. No, thank you. And at the bottom, it says clock given in honor of CEO Steve Dickey from two thousand four to two thousand twenty four by Reverend Richard and Peggy Ziegler.
So much.
I'm gonna pull. I was gonna let Dennis pull my referrals. How many of you turned in a referral this month? You know who you are because you're right here. This is where we give out a hundred dollars cash. How many of you know somebody who should be living here? You're my people. Leanne, Christie, their hands are raised. No, I'm kidding. Anyway, there are cards on your seat that say member referral. When you just turn in a name of somebody that is ready for us to call, your name goes in a drawing for a hundred dollars cash. So right here, my friend Dennis is gonna pick. This month's winner is Dwayne and Janice Blankenship. We, thank you. Okay. So thank you, guys. Please turn in your referrals. Um. We know you love living here. We love you living here and it's even more fun when a friend lives here. I don't know what I just did. There we go. Um, what else is on my list? Oh. We have um an event coming up. This is perfect for anybody who has a referral. Um, it is kind of a senior living one oh one. If you have a friend that you think would like to come to that, you do not come with them. It really is for us to do it. But if you have somebody you would like us to send one of these invitations to, it is a great avenue for them to learn more about what this kind of CCRC life is, how um the entry fees work, all of that good stuff. If you have somebody that you would like us to reach out and invite to this, please reach out to Kristy or Leanne. We would love to invite them to this. It is this month on the twenty something fifth. Um, let us know if you have somebody who you would like to invite to this. Um, they possibly could have already gotten an invitation. We sent out ten thousand um to a mailing list. But if you have a friend that you've been trying just to get here, um, and you, it is a very, it's a really low pressure deal where they can ask questions. They sit, we talk. Um, it's really just a nice entry into the community and senior living one oh one. And please let us know. We'd love to invite them to this event. Any questions? Great. Thank you. I think Dennis, you're next. Oh, Dennis.
Good morning. Okay, um, couple of things from operations. Um, one, uh, just kind of want to give everybody an update on the dining kiosk. Um, when we bought that kiosk, the uh full count folks who is takes care of our POS system, our dining system, said that it would absolutely work exactly as we had described to them that we wanted it to work. And when we got it, it worked exactly the way. Um, in other words, it doesn't work. It it just wouldn't work. That's as simple as I can put it. Um, they've offered to give us our our money back. We have another solution. Um, basically, what you'll see is a screen on the wall. They'll build it's just just a touchscreen and you'll be able to go to that screen and make your dining reservation. So we're gonna get this sent back and we're gonna get a new uh new uh system set up and uh in place. Probably, it'll probably be sometime in May. Now, I know that sounds like a long time away, but May is only a couple of weeks FYI. So um this year is really going fast. So that's kind of an update on the kiosk. We apologize for the inconvenience. Um, but we were misled on um exactly how it would work and uh they admitted it and so they're gonna take it back for us. So we're in good shape there. Couple other things. Um, the um parking lot resurfacing. Um, we pretty much got most of that done. As I said, we wouldn't do the south lot behind the wellness center until we get the roads completed. Um, we've talked to the engineers today. We've we've flown, I don't know, has anybody see, did anybody um see the aircraft flying over above the drone? Yeah, so um what that was was taking measurements and points of measurement and looking at the grade and the terrain to make sure that we get this exactly right. So we don't have any water standing by the mailboxes and those type of things. So that's all been measured, uh sent off to the to the um lab that uh sets those points according to our elevations. And we should have that back pretty soon. Once that happens, then we'll send out a rebid. We, the contractor we was working with, um, when we said, hey, we're we're ready to start this project. Um, his bid went up over a hundred thousand dollars because of the cost of concrete. So we said, no, we're gonna, we're gonna redo this. We're gonna do it. Uh, we we feel like we can save a considerable amount of money by um having a little bit uh better defined parameters. So that's what we're doing. Um, the um, how many, how many of you in here use the Vibrant Portal? Everybody show back. So not a lot, a few. Um, the Vibrant Portal, Vibrant has decided to sunset a lot of our modules that are within the Vibrant product. And what that means is is that they're no longer going to offer them and there are no updates to it. So it will no longer be usable. So when we heard that, um, we, that's when we started really, really getting real serious about um moving over to our new portal Touch Town. And uh, we've got Touch Town up and going. We've uh Bonnie's been working with them to customize our apps that will be inside that portal. The challenge to that is is we have to also, Bonnie has to also work with the Apple Store in order for them to accept those. We don't think there's gonna be any issue there, but it's gonna take a little bit of time. Um, so we're gonna be at least thirty days without a portal. So I just want to send out a reminder that if you want to make reservations for things, we're gonna have to revert back to the the paper version. So um, you'll you'll send your reservations in by paper or manual or contact uh the reservation office and make sure that uh you get your reservation in. So I know that uh uh it's gonna be a little bit of inconvenience for a month or so, but once we get the new portal up and going, I think I think everybody will really, really like how it's going to be laid out, the ease of operation. And it'll really keep our community connected. It's keep everybody uh the communication, I believe, will improve on campus. Um, I don't know what happened to Vibrant, but something happened to them and they, in my opinion, in the senior industry, they're no longer really a player. And I've I've talked to other people um who have had Vibrant, who are switching over just like we are because of that. It's very same factor, people who are like us in our industry. So we should have that up and going. Along with that, I've been um talking about and you've kind of heard me mention the term Can Do. And uh Can Do is going to be a new offering that we're gonna provide. Um, and basically, it's gonna be a trusted source for you to call into to get help, like if you're trying to do telemedicine or if you're trying to learn how to turn the flashlight on on your iPhone or if you're trying to learn how to take pictures with your iPad, any, any of those type of things, edit, edit pictures, those type of things. Um, your workstation, if you have an antivirus challenge, maybe it downloaded something and now your computer's not operating properly and you just need a little bit of help. There'll be a trusted source that you'll be able to dial into and they'll help you. There's no cost for this. So you'll be able to get help with your iPhones, your iPads, your Android devices, uh your 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 workstations, uh your laptops, all of those types of things. And they can even um uh they can, they can even dial into your computer. They can connect to your computer and you can see them on screen and they can help you through all of these different uh challenges that you may have. So again, this is something we're providing and it's it will be no cost to you. Um, Vanna is working on setting up some workshops. Um, those will be coming. Uh, we need to get a couple of things finalized with uh with Touch Town, our new uh member portal. Um, we get a couple of things finalized with them and then we'll be able to bring uh Can Do onsite. And we'll, we'll have some training classes. They uh they call them recruiters. So basically, what they do is they come and they're, you you're able to kind of put um eyes to a name, kind of face to a name type scenario. So you'll see who they are, understand and trust them. And they'll help you get um everything downloaded onto your devices. So you um will have their uh help um right, right there on your phone. It'll be on your right, right there on your phone. It'll be on your phone, on your. You can go through the member portal and get to them. There's going to be several ways for you and very convenient ways for you to be able to access Can Do. So it's going to be a it's going to be a really, to me, it's going to enhance number one, trust. And number two, you know exactly who to go to. They only work with people in our industry. So they're used to senior questions. My grandson says dumb questions. I'm going to label it as senior questions because anyway. Nonetheless, the you know, sometimes they're simple questions, but to them, they're simple. To us, they're very complicated. And when they show us a very simple way, we I feel like I've accomplished something once my grandson shows me what button to push. So anyway. So we'll we'll have an extended pool of grandsons and granddaughters to help us. It's kind of the way I'll put it. Couple other things. You guys, how many? How many have received a We Care Connect survey? Anybody? People? Have you received them or? Okay, so we have a module called We Care Connect. And there's that we send out surveys from time to time. It's very helpful to us that if you get a survey, you'll either get it by email. And if we send you one by email and you don't respond, then they probably will call you. And in some cases, if you don't respond, Carrie may follow up to see if you're interested in filling out the survey. But what it does is it allows us to accumulate data to determine where we're at. So since we've had this, we've had it up and going about nine, nine or 10 months now. And I just kind of want to give you a little bit of an update of how we're doing and kind of where we're at. We have. We have six different areas that we grade in overall satisfaction. Not only do we grade on campus, but we grade against our peers as milestones. Our overall campus satisfaction right now is at 83%. The national average with our peers is 81%. So we're running ahead of what the national milestones are. Staff, we're at 95% and national comparative is 94. Dining services, we're at 76%. The national average is 71. So we're running five points ahead. We know we have some challenges. But I still think the food tastes good and the presentation is good. We just got to work on some of the services and we understand that and we're we're working towards that. Life enrichment scores a 94. And nationally, that also scores a 94. So we're tracking right with those milestones and those benchmarks. Transportation is at 86 and the national benchmark is also 86. Okay. Environmental services, which you have to understand what that term means. That means more than just housekeeping. It also means laundry. And laundry is a kind of a difficult thing. I don't know how many of you have tried to to wash the clothes on a daily basis for over 100 people. But sometimes shirts and sweaters get switched and we we but we always identify them and we get them redelivered. But the national benchmark is 82 and we're running about 79%. So we're a little behind on that. But all in all, five out of the six categories, we're at or above what the national average benchmark is. And to get more defined and better quality data, and the more you respond, the more we can accumulate this data. So if you could, please take time. This is not like a survey where US Cellular is asking you if they're better than AT&amp;T. This is a service where we are asking you, how how are we doing? And if we don't know how we're doing, we don't know what to fix. Couple other things. If you if you answer in some of the categories, are you satisfied with with? Say, your responses from management? And if you answer no, please understand that we're going to try to rectify that. But we're probably going. We're going to contact you and ask you, how can we? Please explain to us what you mean by that and how can we? How can we help? How can we rectify the challenges that you feel like that we're presenting or that are being presented? So if you could, everybody, please fill those out if you would. As much data as I can get, the better off we are. Last thing. No, it says We Care. Yeah, We Care Connect. Yeah. So it will say We Care. So it's not. Please don't throw those in the trash. Please try respond to those if you would, because we really want to know what you're thinking. And you know, we find out from time to time, but in a public forum, not everybody's comfortable with speaking to that. So if you could, please write it down and send the send those surveys in. It would really help us. Yes. Yeah.
Middle ground.
Right.
And I found that really annoying because there are some things that you know, I can't say yes to something when I even though I'm only 85% satisfied or something like that, but it had no scale.
Okay.
And so I find found it an annoying questionnaire.
We will up. Carrie and I will look into that. I thank you for that feedback. That's very helpful. Very, very helpful. Yep. And and we have found sometimes when we ask, was your was your like on new move-ins, was your move-in process adequate? Was it better than you thought, worse than you thought? And we always get worse than we thought. Well, we we kind of panic on that and think, okay, what are we doing? But in reality, when they say that, it was awful because I had to get rid of all my stuff. I had to do all these things at home. You know, all the pressures, all of these different type of things. And it really didn't have anything to do with us. It more had to do with just the circumstance, if you will. So thank you for that. That's very helpful. Any other questions for me? Yes. Yes. So the question was, is that the survey that comes with our move-in anniversary date? And the answer is yes. Yes. Yes, Mike.
Cox Cable.
Yeah, they're still in business. We we are continuing to work through it. I can't do anything until they get until they get the email issue resolved. Please understand those those emails that you got, for those of you who have Cox emails, those did not come from Dennis. They did not come from our efforts of trying to get switched over our internet on campus. Those strictly came from Cox National. That is a nationwide email. I got one of those at home myself. So that I would just like to simply say that wasn't my fault. That's that's just Cox's process. And you will need to sign up through Yahoo. And they sent me the same letter saying, hey, we'll contact you in a few weeks. Well, with Cox, I don't know what that means. And I can and they won't answer it. So. Yes, Dennis. Well, okay, so here's the thing. You're not going to lose your Cox email. Yahoo. When they get it set up with Yahoo, you'll sign up with Yahoo, but you're going to keep your like mine is dennisgram@cox.net. And don't write that down. I got I got a Trinity Woods email too. That one's good. But anyway, that my point is, is I won't. Yahoo will service my email, but my email address will be exactly the same. So you're not going to lose your Cox email. But I can't tell you what's going to happen three to five years from now if this if this particular agreement doesn't work out or something. So if I were you, I would slowly start to transition over, which is what I'm doing at home, starting to transition over to a different type of email, a Y-mail or one of those just or Gmail, one of those, one of those different emails. So and it's very complicated because you got to change your My Charts, you got to change everything that every your whole life has to change basically to a new email. It's just it's amazing how we got into this. Yes.
Yeah, just to clarify, Dennis. Last month, we asked if we gotten any closer to having the free Wi-Fi that you talked about at one time. You said there was a meeting scheduled for that day.
Correct.
But you're saying this is on hold now until they get this issue dealt with the email?
It's on hold until the agreement comes out with Yahoo. Yes. Because I don't want to do any. We don't want to do anything right now that would completely upset the process and give them ability to say, well, you lose all your emails because you did this. And until they can give me an agreement that that won't happen, I'm I'm a little reluctant to move forward. Because I don't want to upset the whole community that everybody has a Cox email. Yeah. So we're still working with them and they they have. I will say this, the meeting we had was very positive. It was with a high level Vice President. He came in from Atlanta. He saw the issues we have, admitted that they have an issue. And his comment to me was is what if we could offer you something that would that none that your customers would never have to call in and use any of our services? And I said, that would be perfect. So that's the path we're going down. I don't know where we're going to end up yet. I started out looking for internet and we may end up with with digital phone, internet, all of that. I'm not sure yet. But anyway, that's that's the path we're going down. Yep. Any other questions? All right, I'm going to go get ready and prepare for the beat down at the pickleball or pickleball court today.
Okay, yeah, I'll be quick. It's 11. I get it. For those of you who came last night, you probably on your table had a card. The board has established the Steve Dickey Education Fund. So if you are interested in honoring Steve in this way, I do want to. I've had a question, so I want to clarify. The reason that we have done this through the Tulsa Community Foundation is because Trinity Woods itself does not is not a foundation. We do not have a foundation. Anything that we do that we want to be legacy and perpetuity, we want to grow it, endowments, trust, that type of thing, we always have used the Methodist Foundation or the Community Foundation. And it's actually a great thing for people who aren't necessarily here in Tulsa. The Tulsa Community Foundation is fabulous. They're probably one of the top ones in the nation. But that's why we do the fund through there because this fund is meant. Our budget is yearly, which means we have to zero down. When you go through a foundation, this fund can grow, it's managed, and it's meant to last year after year after year. So that is why we elected to do it the way we did. Make no mistake, when you do it through them, it is Trinity Woods money. It is not the Community Foundation's money. It is money gifted to Trinity Woods. So I just want to make that. There was a couple of questions about that. So if you do have questions about this, reach out to me. Jessica is our program officer over there. She's fabulous. We'd either one be happy to help you if you're trying to navigate this. Last. We have summer logo stuff. The logo shop closes on Monday. So if you have any last minute orders, please get those in. You should have a link or a QR code. I think there's one over in Crestwood that you can do. If you need anything, reach out to Heidi or myself. We'd be happy to get you that link if you are interested in ordering Trinity Woods merch. And last would be the pickleball smackdown that we all talk about. I'm pretty sure I'm going to be the smacking downed person. But anyway, come out and watch that today. It's at 2. Thanks. I mean, I was going to be there, but I don't remember.
Now, the rumor, I've heard a rumor that people are going to go easy on me this afternoon because of my pending retirement. And I I really want to ask you, please don't do that. Please bring your best game. And everybody will have much more fun if if you'll do that. So.
We won't.
We'll enjoy you smacking Steve down. Make no mistake.
Thank you so much. Great to see everybody. Have a have a great weekend and we'll see you later.
Online question?
Yes.
Or not?
I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
This is Allison. What I wanted to know was how will the the? What shall I say? Things are getting more and more automated. I don't have a iPhone and I probably can't use some of these things. How will that be handled?
Yes, so the manual processes of contacting the concierge or and getting them to put any reservations in for you or anything like that will not change or go away. That'll all stay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for joining us, Allison. We appreciate your question. Everybody, have a great weekend and we'll see you this afternoon.